And I've asked a couple of people to come in to start the meeting. I've asked Doug Alexander, who was a school resource officer, worked with me for many years. When I was a school resource officer, a former deputy sheriff, he's a pastor of the New Church Without Walls, and I've asked him to come in to open us. And I've also asked Lieutenant Dave Vincent from the Luthakutchee Technical College and also a part of the Citrus County Sheriff's Office. He oversees the Luthakutchee Technical College Criminal Justice Academy. I've asked him to come in along with one of his honor guards from one of his law enforcement classes that are here with us today that present the colors. So it's a privilege that I have to have these two men come before the board to open the meeting. And they both, Dave Vincent, also served as a school resource officer and did a great job and is a lieutenant now and we're glad to have him at Luthakutchee Technical College. And so at this time, I would like everyone to please rise for their location and remain standing for the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance.
First, let me thank Doug for allowing me to be here today. It's a pleasure to be here and all of you and what you guys do mean a lot to me to be here, even though a little bruised up, but certainly appreciate the opportunity just to be here and to be with you guys because Citrus County is my true home and it's where I was born, went to school here. It's a pleasure to be here. And I said to myself just sitting there, I said, "I'm gonna talk to Thomas and Doug to see if you guys can be my secretary now." I at least need to make about four or five of these a year. Okay, with all hearts clear, let's go ahead and go before the board. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this board. We thank you for the school board and God that they do. We thank you for those that have been elected as officials to see over the business of the school and over the school board. I pray a special blessing for them, Lord, in all that they do. I pray for their families. We pray for the kids, the children. We pray for all that the children will learn with the guidance of this school board. We pray for the blessings, God, that you would help us as they govern, as they look over Citrus County. Not only that, but God, we pray for America. We ask that you bless America, give guidance and strength to all those that in office, God, to lead others. We pray, God, for safety of this school, school board, and all those that are around. Father, we pray for everyone that's here under the sound of my voice, that you would bless them and bless their families, Lord. Thank you for a great day. We love you and we just adore your name. We ask all this in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you may be seated. And like I said, I've asked also Lieutenant Dave Vincent to come up and address the board, give us this brief update on his program and the program we have for law enforcement and corrections officers at Luthakutchee Technical College.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, board members, Mr. Chairman. So I kind of try to think about some things that you kind of update John, and I know a lot of people like statistics and numbers, and I have some of those for you. But the things that are important to me in our programs, first hope if you've not heard our mission statement, I brought that with me just for you to hear. So I'd like to read this time. "It's the mission of each program in the training center to provide the highest level of ethical, modern, and practical training to current and future public safety professionals, preparing them for the challenges of today and tomorrow. And our core values are integrity, dedication, motivation, excellence, consistency, and courage." So I thought that was important to always relay because, you know, the core of our profession, especially our core values mean a lot to us, and we hope that we relay that to our students that come through our programs. So I just want to give you just a general overview of the programs that we do offer there and where we're at with those. Our core classes are obviously our Law Enforcement Academy. We run two of those a year. We run a nighttime program in the fall, and in the springtime, we run a daytime program. We also, in conjunction with those, run two correctional officer programs, both at an evening and in the daytime. A law enforcement officer certification class is 770 hours, so that a nighttime student will run from August, end of August to in June before they graduate. And then correctional officers are 440 hours, so they'll run from August to the end of January, beginning of February before they graduate. We also run crossover classes, and what that means is that if you're a current law enforcement officer and want to become a corrections officer, we offer crossover programs for you to have dual certification in both of those fields. And typically where we see those type of applicants in our programs are guys that have been in their careers a little while and are being voted within an agency that has both a correction side and a law enforcement side when they're running the jail. So we'll see guys that, we just had a captain from Hernando County, he's 25 years as a law enforcement officer, just come through a basic recruit class again to be a correctional captain at the jail in Hernando County. So it's really an interesting mix when you see those crossover guys coming through. Some guys are new and just want to do dual certifications, but it's always interesting to see the guys that have been doing their job for 20-plus years coming back to a basic recruit class, so it's interesting to know who makes. We serve about 80 to 100 students in a calendar year in our basic recruit classes. Our completion rates for these classes on average are 94 percent for law enforcement officer and 97 percent for corrections, passing from the moment they step in the door. We usually lose one or two either with personal issues or physical fitness, but for the most part, our completion rate is very happy comparatively in state. As far as passing the state certification exam, the benchmark in the state is in the 80 percentile. I'm pleased to say that we're at the 91 percentile for a law enforcement officer passing the state exam and 93 percent for corrections officers passing their state exam. So a big thing for us also is placement rate. Once they get out, we want to get them jobs, so the last several years, we've been well above the state average in that area as well. Law enforcement is in the 80 percentile and corrections is in the 90 percentile. And I believe the last two corrections class, we've had 100 percent job placement with those. So in addition to the basic recruit classes, the legislature for the state designates a certain dollar amount per law enforcement officer in the state to receive additional training every year. So currently, the training center receives $67 per officer within our region. Our region consists of Marion, Citrus, Hernando, Sumter, and the Hattie Camins. We share that pot of money with the College of Central Florida because they are the other designated training center in our region, so they receive 51 percent of that pot, and we receive 49 percent. And the difference of that is, is they serve Marion County, which has a larger number of officers in that county, so that was what we designated as a fair split of those funds. So with that, we operate our advanced and specialized classes on about $45,000 a year, and we offer about 12 to 15 of those classes, and they range anywhere from a 24-hour block of instruction to an 80-hour block of instruction, just depending on the topic. Some of the examples of our advanced and specialized classes are taser instructor, crimes against children, inmate manipulation, general instructor techniques, crisis intervention training, which is becoming more and more prevalent with mental health issues in our community, so we're really taking a strong stance with that type of training, firearms instructor courses, and many others that we offer. We try to alternate those classes based on the needs of the agencies that we serve in our training region. So that's really just a real quick overview down and dirty of some of the programs and some of the numbers, and if you guys, if you don't have any questions, that's all I have for you.
I have a question. What does it cost to take like an 80-hour course?
It's free. That's all, that's all the pot of money that we receive.
Right. Goes to the...
Yeah, we, those classes that we operate, we have to budget that and report that quarter to FDLE, Department of Law Enforcement, so that's one of the stipulations with that.
They have to buy books or...
No, no, all of the, all of the materials included with those classes come out of the state trust fund, so it doesn't cost the district any money to put on those classes.
And it doesn't cost the individual?
Yeah, it's actually in statute against the law to charge that person to cover those classes.
Did you know?
Lieutenant Vincent, thank you so much for your presentation. Is there another question? I'm sorry.
Do you want to ask the criteria as far as acceptance into the program, the law enforcement program, is the criteria?
You have to be a graduate of high school or GED equivalent, and you have to be 18 years of age. We try to push guys, because most agencies are not going to hire you at 18 and 19 years of age, because, you know, legally you have to be 21 to carry a handgun, so as far as a law enforcement officer, we try to push guys, you know, when you're around your 20th birthday, that's a good time for you to come into our program or early, you know, in your 19th year or so. But for corrections officers, we can take them a little bit younger because that requirement isn't there for them to carry a firearm every day. So we try, those 18-year-olds, we take them, and we love to have them in our programs, but we really do try to curtail, say, "You're really not going to be eligible for hire for another year or two, so you, you know, maybe take the college route for a few years and then come see us."
I appreciate you. So that the crisis intervention classes, what's that, the system?
Crisis intervention, that deals with, that's usually a 40-hour block, and what that deals with is any aspect of mental health, whether it's dealing with dementia, Alzheimer's, like critical incidents where someone's having like, so the schizophrenia, stuff like that, how to deal with those people. That is probably one of our most popular classes, not just because it's a big topic right now in society itself, but the way that that's presented, we partner with the centers in Ocala that actually does the instruction for us, and they actually bring patients in that are dealing with those issues, and they speak to our officers. We actually take tours of the center facilities, because I can tell you for myself, you know, it was probably 18 years into my career before I took this particular class, and up until then, I had never seen past the front desk of the centers, I'd never seen what the facility looked like in the back or anything like that, so these officers get a chance to see what is behind that desk and where do these patients go and how are they treated back there. So it's an extremely popular class, it's very well presented by the centers, and very successful for us right now.
You got a few year specs, about eight years, so that guy asked about that, if there was training at that time, but it was not. But whatever you said, that is so magnificent, the job that the training.
Right, and we're trying to, I feel fortunate with our agency because we really pushed, I believe we're, 80 percent of our officers have taken CIT now, when a lot of other agencies didn't see that either, like we did several years ago, and they're now trying to catch up to where we are, so we're blessed to have that many guys that have that training.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron.
I know the board is aware that it is a regional training center, but I think it's to our community, you know, to make sure they know that we are one of the two training centers in this region, and our program here is very well regarded and highly respected, and a lot of that comes back to you and your instructors, and I just want to thank you. You know, you're keeping us all safe. You're teaching officers how to be safe and teaching them how to enforce the law in a highly ethical manner, and that in turn keeps us safe, so I appreciate very much your work, and this, I'm sure this board does.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Mr.?
Mr. Dodd, thank you very much for bringing them forward today and giving us that opportunity. We have the adoption of the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Vow for, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Citizens' comments. I have one green card here. If anyone is wishing at this time to speak before the board on any item on the agenda, they would need to do that. Oh, okay, that's what I was just going to clarify, that this is at 5:15. So there'll be a second opportunity at 5:15 to speak on any item before the board. With that, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Need to approve? Second.
I have a motion by, sorry, a motion by Ginger Bryant, a second by Linda Powers, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Five zero. And we are moving on to finance. Yes, sir. Mr. Bishop, if you can look at it. Thank you. Just pause for just a quick second. Mr. Blocker, I want to thank you too for you and your team also putting together, getting outlets for us here.
Yes, we all...
Seems like a small thing, but it's actually a big thing for us to be able to keep our devices charged up and utilized, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gettys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gettys. Okay, we're going to move on to finance. Item 10, approval purchase of district-wide time clocks.
Mr. Blocker? Yes, sir. We've asked for approval to implement the time clocks out in the schools. We're doing this as a request to address the issues that the auditor brought forth to us last year, that I spoke to you all about, in reference to having supervisor review and approval of all time for support staff and professional technical hourly employees that the supervisor must review and approve their time. We are utilizing the system that we have in place with Skyward, the True Time, and so we're just asking to push out time clocks at the locations of the schools specifically, that all those people don't have access to computers to be able to log in. This will be easy, they can use their card, it already has the chip inside, they wave it, it asks, you know, it says who they are, they say, "I'm in," and that's it, and they go home, and they do the same thing. So this is just being able to put these out there for the ease and access of those employees who don't have computers. We already doing this in transportation, it's been working, we're doing it in maintenance, food service, we've got the district staff onboard, they're just pushing it out, so we're just addressing that audit.
And they can do either or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we just need to first decide if we're going to have a conversation, or do we want to go ahead and have a motion and then have a conversation. So board members, if you'd like to chime in. Mr. Dodd, did you have something on?
Well, I was just going to clarify Ms. Bryant's comment on the either or, I wasn't really sure if I understood. I thought if we're monitoring time clocks, they're going to be using the time clock.
They are, but people can log in their computer, so it isn't either or. Typically, though, you have custodians, food service, all of your teacher aides at the schools, and support staff, they don't have access to computers, so this is going to be a select location, they can just swipe, they say, "I'm here," and they're done. So if you had a, if you had a computer, if you wanted all these people to go in a computer, you may have it lined up 25D.
Sure.
And everyone's got to log in, it takes time. This is a very simple, quick process, that's why we're...
Yeah, and just, at this point, just...
Yeah, we can go ahead and have, go ahead.
...conversation. And we're looking for 45 time clocks. The time clocks, the cost of those, we're looking at $79,000 plus. In order to communicate with the Skyward program, the True Time, these, the time clocks, they take up some sort of bandwidth to do that?
They are hooked up to the data network.
Okay.
I don't know how much bandwidth they take up, they're hooked up to the networks, probably not much.
And then looking at, I'm just looking at 70 million thousand plus.
It's a one-time cost that we're asking for, we're having to roll this out to address the audit exception, so we're trying to make this as easy as possible for employees, so they're not, like I say, backed up 20 deep trying to log in, or trying to log in at eight o'clock.
You're seeing it as more efficient than buying enough computers to help?
That's what I would say, yes.
Yeah, I, I looked at it, and it would be nice to have one at every single door, every entrance to every building where people are coming through, I definitely see where you're going with it. I definitely see, and I've talked with staff that are managing it, some have 12 people that they're supervising for this, and some have 100-plus people. So I definitely understand that it's critical that you have a tool that's a good solution.
Another thing that we can do, some like transportation, they have multiple jobs that perform at different rates, and they can clock in and clock out at those different rates, and we potentially could have some of those at the school sitting level too, so that would help become more efficient with the payroll, because this feed grant to the payroll system, make it more efficient for that as well.
Yeah, I did, I talked with payroll also about the program, and I definitely understand where you're going. Looking at that 45 of 79,000 plus, is there any reoccurring cost at all for those 45 times?
Not that I'm aware of, this is one-time cost.
No, no, just show me, and so they're going to be...
And I think it comes with a warranty for two years, I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah, it has a extended second year warranty included.
And then looking at implementing the goals that you have for the True Time in order to comply with the audit, will this be it? Will this be with the computers that we already have?
What I can tell you is, we're addressing the exception that we received from last year with this system. That's not to say they won't come in this year and tell me I do something in addition to, or maybe have other people use this system. I can only tell you that's what we're addressing. I spoke with them a few weeks ago and said, "They want to know where I was at, what phase I was in." I told them, "We have transportation's on," which they saw last year, I said, "Maintenance is on, finance, food service, and now we're rolling out to the schools," and they were very happy with that progress we're making.
And as far as the rollout, the rest of WTC, food service, and the other departments, you have had some of these time clocks in some of those locations already.
Yes.
And there is, are you seeing it as a better advantage, or are you just seeing it as they have the option? Because I know we've got computers everywhere, I'm just, that 79,000 is just really, it's tough to swallow.
Yeah, all I can tell you, if you have multiple people at one single location, you only have one or two computers, this is a much more efficient method to use. Maintenance is a prime example. Transportation's a prime example, those people are using the time clocks, and I've heard nothing but good things, and I need feedback.
They can buy a lot of computers for 79,000, but I definitely understand where you're wanting it to be at the door, and I saw...
The locations will be selected by the principal, I'm not sure exactly what, but I'm sure it's a central location, some will have multiple locations, so you have different viewpoints, people will come in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I had some questions originally, and we talked about it, and I think Mr. Blocker answered all my questions, but, you know, I still want to stress the importance of communication with the employees, which we talked about, to make sure they know, because this is going to be a change for them, for a lot of them, and, you know, change can be hard, but we're doing this because of the audit.
Right.
And we're doing this in a way that we can stay in line with our generally accepted accounting principles that guide the way we spend money, and a lot of this is money that's going with people's time, with salaries. So in that regard, we are protecting the organization, and we're making sure we're following...
And the employee.
And the employee, correct. Yes, and when I say organization, I mean the score as a whole, all of its employees, but that's, that's why we're doing it, and I hope that the employees may understand that at whatever degree, because when it involves change, you know, it can be hard, you know, it can be an easy thing to complain about, probably.
Absolutely. It's the communication that we'll have to get out, we've already started, I know Mr. Bishop and his department has already had one or two trainings already, that they've walked out, you know, trained the timekeepers and tell them, you know, "This is how we're going to do it, this is why we're doing it." This is certainly not something we wanted to do. We've been doing payroll exception for many, many years. The auditor now is taking a role that they want more controls, they want to implement a more stringent way of controlling who's keeping time and how we're making sure that people are coming to work, you know, at certain hours and when they're leaving. This is a statewide push by the auditor, they announced it at our last conference, and a lot of school districts hadn't even been in touch with this yet, we just happened to be on the one of the ones last year, I guess, looking for...
And I too had similar questions with Vow for about, you know, the computers, because it is, it seems to be, it is an expensive track we're on, but it's, it's necessary, but I think that the waiting in line, you have to get on a computer, would be what employees would be very disappointed with, you know, frustration of having to wait when they come to work with this, it'll just be a swipe in and out, and it's a done, it's done.
Well, and I definitely understand, my thought was, for 79,000 plus, we can have several computers lined up at an entrance, wherever that traffic flows the steepest, we can have several computers lined up versus the one, the one swipe spot. And I definitely like that ability to just swipe and go. You swipe, pop, 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 three or four digits, and you're in. But when you have just one on at an entrance point, and I guess what they're saying to me is, we're going to give the administrators the opportunity to identify the...
Oh, absolutely.
...the position that's going to be to the best advantage of the system.
Yeah, because what I think would be the best pace may not be, so I want them to tell us.
Right. They're going to have that opportunity.
Everybody would have to log into the computer, get in, and log into Skyward, it would take, it would be the hardest.
And I know that with computers, there's always a maintenance, we always have maintenance issues with computers. We won't have that with this time system, the time clocks.
I can't tell you, we'll have maintenance, and they won't break, I mean, everything is something...
And we've done a comparable, can we log in quicker or swipe quicker? So you've done all these comparisons.
I haven't had any feedback that says that they're not.
Okay.
If something went wrong, I think we first put in the entries here. Sometimes they wouldn't work, and you all have to go back and read just, same thing here, it's not working. Who is the person going to call you about, or what?
Well, we would go to, you know, to Steve Chamberlain, HR, the combination of people to find out what the root cause of, and to make the determination who has to fix, and Steve Chamberlain's going to help with the rollout, he's worrying it, rolling it out from the school. He's going to make, and then Dr. Gettys' crew may get involved with the data hookup, so it's a combination of many people, but as a team, we'll get it out there and get it out as best.
So John Smith, the teacher came out and did swipe, it wouldn't take, it, he could go to some of the schools, like, "I'm here, it's any clock."
Go to the timekeeper, yeah, go to the timekeeper, there's provisions for all that, certainly, yeah. The timekeeper's been trained about some of those things, and it's going to be ongoing learning, just much like everything else, plan do, check act, you know, the plan that we do, we check and we react to what the issues are.
In the current system that's out there, the badge readers that are out there now, we can't maximize or utilize that current technology at all.
We are, we are using the battery here, because that's what they use, cards, and that time clock we're buying is a battery here, using the same existing card.
So the same existing, as far as, when we have to come through any of the buildings, the doors here, this technology that's in those doors right now, it can't communicate at all with Skyward?
No, but it's the same technology that reads the card. They do keep a log if who comes in, what hours.
Okay.
They have that log, but it's not tied into the Skyward. Right, it's not into the True Time system.
Mr. Blocker, I want to thank you, I, as a chair, had to sit on that, the audit, on the exit audit, and you tried very hard to negotiate a bit with the auditors to get them to take a better understanding of the accepted, you know, accounting practice of by exception. That is what we use in business all the time, and it was kind of frustrating to see that the auditors would not accept that, because, and Mr. Dodd, you brought up, one of the challenges is, is that this is a major change for staff. I think this is probably the better logistical option of these time clock readers, because one of the challenges that I think we're going to have is, there's going, there is a potential loss of time with having to take on now this tracking, because it's not just now the scart swiping, somebody's going to have to account for this, somebody's going to have to double-check it, somebody's going to have to sign off on it, and it is going to create a new challenge for us that creates hours and nan-times. So it's not, there's never going to be a perfect situation, this is certainly, I think, mitigates it a little better than even I had thought and envisioned at the time that we were sitting there during the audit. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. Again, I am disappointed, though, that they won't take by exception. I do think the silver lining in this is, we do see some positive options that this is going to provide, and it may provide us some of those things with the buses that we talked about, with the different charges, and I'm hopeful of that. If there's anything else, I need to entertain that emotion.
I need to approve the purchase of district-wide time clocks. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve purchase of district-wide time clocks. Any more discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thanks for all the...
Motion carries five zero. Good afternoon, Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon. I'd like to request the board's approval of instructional support recommendations.
If you could just give us a second, and then, board members, when someone's ready, they can make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the personal instructional positions as presented on the golden round.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve instructional support recommendations. Any comments, questions? Mr. Bishop, how we doing as far as open positions right now?
We currently have 44.
We currently have forty-four instructional positions open and twenty-two support staff positions. You know, this year we expanded our recruiting efforts to go to five different recruiting seminars in anticipation that, you know, there may be a challenge out there trying to bring people into the district. We expanded our recruiting efforts and we also have now contracted with Teacher Teacher to host our positions nationwide as well. So we're hopeful that with the bringing up, bringing the board, Teacher Teacher, that we'll be able to fill those forty-four positions relatively quickly.
And Ms. Bryant and I did hold up the signs you suggested that teachers wanted while we were up north and-
We appreciate that.
Do you expand on the Teacher Teacher program?
Yeah, basically they have a nationwide posting board that we can post our jobs on. It just gives us more exposure in the marketplace and try to bring people from all over the country.
Is it free service or?
No, it is not free. We do have to pay for that. It's around three thousand dollars.
Is it ale?
Yes, ma'am.
It used to be a similar service provided by the state board.
That's correct.
Yeah, remember Florida Department of Education, they have a new floor.
Unfortunately, they discontinued that at the state level, so we're out of this one down here only.
Any more constant questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five zero.
At this time, I'd like to request the board's approval of the athletic and other supplements for the 2015, 2016 school year.
I move to approve the athletic and other supplements for 2015, 16.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour to approve athletic and other supplements for the 2015, 2016 school year. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five zero.
And lastly, I'd like to request the board's approval of a part-time evening and criminal justice slash fire academy instructors for WTC for the 2015, 16 school year.
I move to approve the part-time evening and criminal justice fire academy instructors for WTC for the 2015, 16 school year.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, I'm sorry, by Ms. Balfour to approve of part-time evening and criminal justice fire academy instructors for WTC for the 2015, 2016 school year. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Dixon, as you're coming up, I've skipped over and Ms. Powers was so good to remind me. Recognition of donations. Ms. Fernarami, can you read those for us?
First donation is that, a ten thousand dollar donation to Chris River High School from Robert W. Kelly, the Thor. A ten thousand dollar donation to the Marine Science Station from the Citrus County Education Foundation. A five hundred dollar donation to Chris River High School from Michael Tringy.
Tringany.
Okay, thank you. And Genesis E. Bennett Senior Trust, an approved motorcycle helmet donation valued at one thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars to a professional technical college from Crystal Harbor, Maine. An eight hundred dollar donation to Citrus County Elementary School from Target Online, thanks to Bill and Fred.
Thank you. And thank you to all of you that have supported our school system again. Mr. Dixon?
Yes, good afternoon, board members. The one item to set the public hearing is 4.18 academic and career planning. The proposal is to delete the citations. Statutes have been repealed for 106.02 and 1007.21. Those being provision of information to students and parents regarding school to work transition and readiness for post-secondary education in the workplace. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Dixon, I have to ask you, if someone addressed the town, the concern, the mechanism of this occurring from the middle school to the high school and who checks the boxes, yes, we've done it.
Okay, I think Mr. Clark can address that.
Okay, thanks so much.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullin and the school board attorney, Mr. Bradshaw. Mrs. Powers contacted me and just basically asked if I give you an overview of the current educational planning requirement that the state had actually put in place in 2006. Florida statute 1003.4156 was passed, which required all students in grades six through eight to complete a course that was designed called Career and Educational Planning. When this came out, it was actually the same time when a lot of the middle school requirements came out as well, as far as the social studies, the mathematics, and the three successful years of each of those courses. Through the collaboration, when we started to talk about this in our curriculum meetings with the schools and the district office, we basically identified the course to be embedded into the offering for students in grades eight. Closer they were to high school, the rationale, the board applicable that would be, that they could do that. It actually first came out in statute as far as grade seven and grade eight, and then they expanded to grades six, seven, and eight. But again, we kind of maintain that rationale, the closer to the high school, the more pertinent, applicable the plan would be. Over the years, in Citrus County schools, it went from a standalone elective class to a requirement that we included into the eighth grade social studies classes. Again, the question was the sustainability of some of the electives that were in there. We actually identified the course code 21000015 and that actually does have the U.S. history, middle grades, U.S. history, and the career and educational planning standards. Board members, just so you two know, I did actually drop into your Dropbox this morning, an overview of what I'm giving you, also resources that will give you a couple of things. One is the mechanism that we talked about, Mrs. Powers just asked about, and then some other links on there. One is the course description for that class that I'm referencing. At a minimum, this course, and this is actually in statute, must be an internet-based, easy-to-use and customizable to each student to include research-based assessments to assist students in determining their educational and career options and goals. In addition, the course must result in a completed personalized academic and career plan for the student. It must emphasize the importance of entrepreneurial skills. Must emphasize technology or the application of technology and career skills. And beginning in 2015, 2014, 15 academic year, must include information in the Department of Economic Opportunities Economic Security report as described in section 44. Basically to note viability of the work that they're going to recruit. The required personalized academic and career plan must inform students of high school graduation requirements. So over the years since 2006, that actually has been updated in order to be able to include a lot of the requirements that the students have actually had changed over the years for high school requirements. It also added a component for advanced courses such as IB, dual enrollment, AP courses. So that way, when students actually get to this plan, they'll review that. So let me talk about the mechanism in which the students actually utilize this. A classroom may have used this in the past. The vehicle that is used to generate this plan is an online tool called Florida Choices. So it was actually the Department of Education that actually generated the website and it actually was an interactive website so that students could actually go on, sign in. And it was kind of an interesting survey. As of the 2015, 16 year, this will actually be changing. Been around for a while. It started out as fax.org, then it went into Florida Choices. It's making yet another change and the Department of Education's pretty excited about it. Each grade is given a pass, a sign-in and a password to Florida Choice. The students then sign in and take a test. The computer then gives them a list of possible career clusters. Interest of that, some possible jobs related to that career cluster. They must then, as to the average pay, education, growth potential, and overview of possible jobs. Once the electronic plan is actually identified and this includes courses that they'd actually be taking at the high school level, that is then shared with parents and the high schools the following year. The plan is then reviewed and updated each year as the certified school counselors are responsible for overseeing this important component of the students' track in order to be able to reach a high school diploma. Since this requirement has been put into place, Citrus County Schools has basically conducted approximately four staff workshops on the course and the online tool. So not only the teachers of those courses, the U.S. history, but also the certified guidance counselors would actually be attending this. Right now, Mrs. Humboldt is actually overseeing this and at the district level, and she's in the process of scheduling another workshop for the My Career Shines. So as we start to get into this new year, the students that are in eighth grade will actually have a new device in order to generate. So that's kind of, and it's, the high schools, they tweak them, edit them on a yearly basis and-
For the student?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And then it goes on to the key folder.
It's actually online, everybody, the guys have access online, so they actually edit it online. Over the information that I provided to you, is it, if you have a question about accessing it?
I'll access it. Yeah, excellent. I can use that Florida Choices. Straight from business, it's a great tool.
Lot of resources available.
And with that board, if you have no other questions or comments, then we need to go ahead and get moving.
Policy 4.18, academic and career planning, second.
I'm giving it to Mr. Dodd.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd to approve to advertise for a public hearing at the September 8th, 2015 school board meeting to approve the revisions of policy 4.18 academic and career planning. Any more questions or comments?
I was just thinking about what I was thinking about in the eighth grade and it was nothing like this. And I was in the eighth grade. Inspiring talk to all of us because all of us are right there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. We'll see you in just a few more minutes. With that, we can approve the minutes.
I need to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour to approve the minutes. Any questions, comments, corrections? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Attorney legal matters. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. And our next item is item eight and I ensured that this was on the agenda. And I'm just going to hand it over to you, Ms. Linda, if that's okay? Do we, did we get those, Ms. Fernarami? I know I did.
Okay, yeah, then I do have that. I just want to make sure.
And for a couple of years, we've not been a member. Before that, we were. And, thank you. And what I saw happening in the last meeting, when the FSBA was meeting, there's been a change of leadership in the FSBA, the president's retired, the person coming in. It's sort of a direction in legislation. And when I saw that, I thought immediately of our chairman there who keeps track of everything. But in order to have a voice, to have a place to say something, you have to be there to be a member. And I thought, when I saw this, I thought, oh my gosh, I really would like Mr. Kennedy to be able to be a part of that. And I know he's had some issues with it in the past, I think maybe more need to, maybe not enough was done, more needed to be done. And I thought, there can't be a better candidate to do the more that he was speaking about than Mr. Kennedy. And in the papers that we got, I talked about the small district council doing several things, getting two million dollars in sparsity funding for Citrus County. I know there was a discussion on that also. And the digital classroom, four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for Citrus. They talked about working into the legislature to establish a base of two hundred fifty thousand within the Florida. To, and other priorities of the small district council, that they support the 1.5 mil funding. Safe schools are consistently behind safe schools and funding for school resource officers and other groups do some too. They keep it out of the retirement system and sovereign immunity limits, many other things. But my biggest concern is I want Citrus Kennedy to be at that table, to have a voice. And if we're not a member, we can say something, but it doesn't carry the weight. If we're not a, maybe a person on one of the committees, the president, the vice president, it doesn't carry the weight. And I, with my vision of the growth that's taking place in FSBA and the focus that FSBA has now on legislation and wanting us, school boards, to be at the table when decisions are made on education. Also, I would like to see us be at the table when decisions are made on the small district. So to me, it's a very important thing and I sound like I'm railroaded.
No, 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 no.
You have so much information. When I was at the last meeting, Ginger and I were sitting there and I just wanted to hop and say, ask Thomas, he has all those statistics, ask Thomas.
You're kind.
You do, you do. And so I was very excited about that and very excited particularly if I could just encourage you to be a part of that, that I would feel really positive.
Yes, Ms. Fernarami.
I'd like to say that we all need to be heard in Tallahassee, all of us. But if you're comparing Baker County, Union County with Dade County or Duol County, who do you think are going to listen to? And that's what the small district consortium does. It puts thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty, I don't know, small counties and they pay attention because that's who we are. And that makes us bigger than Dade.
Exactly right, because we're together, thirty-seven of us are together speaking with one voice. And we are listened to as Dade would be.
Yes.
But one county is not listened to. Together, we have the ability to swipe and votes and to talk with people. And particularly have someone who's really good at doing that. Anyone?
Well, I was able to go to the small district consortium meeting at the Florida School Board Association conference. And overall, I was pretty impressed by the information that was presented. There was a lot of legal information dealing with legislature business at that time. But, you know, I noticed that out of the, oh gosh, I can't remember, forty-some counties that were eligible. I guess there's a, what defines a small district. I think Citrus and Charlotte, I think, were the only two that weren't involved. And so, you know, I talked to some people, some other districts, and they felt like it was very valuable to them to be a part of that. You know, I'm a new board member, so I don't, I don't know, the past history, I understand there has been some past history that maybe they didn't come through or they didn't deliver for us like we would have wanted them to. But I, as a new member, I kind of feel like it would be an advantage for us to be a part of it. And just to be in that group because one voice is significant when you look at that. I think we would be the fourth largest, if you combined all of them, I think they were the third, fourth largest district. And it would be, if you combine all these small districts. So, you know, sparsity money, all those funds are important. And so I'm thinking that there could be some advantage and maybe they'll, maybe because the board's vote in the past, maybe they'll be more likely to hear us, you know, because they know that we mean business and we mean business for our county. And so, but I think it would be an advantage to move in that direction.
Ms. Balfour, did you have anything?
I know that in the past, there was a problem when we had the Duke Energy issue and we didn't feel support from the organization. But looking at the overall structure of the consortium and considering that we are kind of the odd man out, so to speak, as far as representation for the price tag attached to it with specific goals also attached to it. I'm all about, if there's an expenditure, we need to understand what the goals are. So with that, I do support it. I think we need to have our voices heard. Back to what Ginger was saying, each and every one of the board members should also have a voice heard in Tallahassee. But looking at it from the powers, not just Linda Powers, but the powers of members, I definitely see the value in having a voice at that table.
Well, it's been, it's been tough to try and, you know, go through the last couple of years. But what I will say is that, you know- But what I will say is that, you know, I was frustrated, and this board knows that, with when we did go through that. And Mr. Blocker certainly and I had lots of conversations at times about it. I think we sent a message. I think that we, I feel, I stated, or this board stated where we stood, and what we would and wouldn't accept. I will tell you, Ms. Powers and Ms. Bryant, because I know in particular, you all have just been steady in support, both of the small district consortium, as well as trying to be supportive of my concerns. And I have valued that and continue to value that. And as a result of that, I am willing to listen to this board and support this as well. And I think it's time to move forward and support going back in. So with that, if there's no other questions, I can entertain a motion.
Well, I knew that Citrus County likes to become a part of the small district. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot that.
Oh, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we need Mr. Valford or Ms. Ginger?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, that's right. You didn't yet. Okay.
Okay, I will make a motion that the Citrus County School Board join the Small School District Council Consortium.
Wait, second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Valford, that, and I apologize, I'm just making sure I got my notes here, that we approve joining the small district consortium membership, and that we will execute, then I'm just, for clarification, the consortium resolution here. I don't know if you want to make that part of your motion.
The resolution that...
That's okay. It was included here.
Okay. Yes, I would like to make that part of my motion, that that would be signed, that would be approved.
Ms. Valford, will you include that in? Okay. Then, just for clarification, we're going to approve the Small District Consortium Membership Resolution, affirming participation in the Small District Consortium. Is there any more comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Okay, who's calling, Chris?
I would call. You'll be calling right now?
Thank you to all the board members. Thank you. With that, it is almost 5 o'clock. We have a 5:15, I believe, is our next certain time. So what we're going to go ahead and do is recess until 5:14. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I'm going through thinking we already did that.
No, board members, I'm sorry, we need to go to item, for any other business, so I need to just go ahead and check that.
I asked by FSBA to have legislative liaison on, what's actually the last meeting, I believe, that's this week, and I have been the legislative liaison. I had talked with Ginger, and Ginger was, you were also interested this year, were you not in legislative liaison?
This is, you do it. You do such an excellent job.
I thought you were still doing it, because I thought that was still your appointment.
I am still doing it, yeah, it still is.
Yeah. So that would continue.
Continue?
Yeah. Do you want to contact them, or we'll have Ms. Verarami contact FSBA?
Okay.
Yeah, go right there. No.
At the last meeting, we talked about a strategic plan, we discussed it here at the board. Some people from State Teachers for College had some really good information, and some a way for all of us in the county, that the district service has, to be able to create that strategic plan, our seats to be updated. So I'm just bringing that, that based in the future, Mr. Mullen, or whenever, Mr. Mullen, whenever you have a chance, or whenever you start working on the strategic plan.
Are you talking about the district's?
Yes, yes. The, no, the district's plan. And the board needs, the board needs a strategic plan, so we need to give a time to begin to work on the strategic plan. I think, you're already working on for the district?
Mr. Clodder.
Mr. Clodder, is that it?
There, back in the days of old, there was a strategic plan, and it's actually posted on the district's website. What has happened is that the state has actually transitioned to the district improvement plan and the school improvement plan. So I think the board knows that as a high-performing district, we do have the ability to weigh out of some things. And so one of the things is the requirement for our school improvement plan, as far as that specific template and the district improvement plan. So what we have basically developed, and you're going to see this when you go through your school improvement plan reviews, schools have actually gotten a kind of a streamlined, even yet, a one-page document. Some of you saw that last year. You saw the goals were identified, strategies were then identified, you saw the professional development that was actually identified by those schools. And there is a one-page document, and we are going to then, at the district office, also have a similar document like that. So that's why I'm saying the, the strategic plan has actually shifted over the years that I've been at the district, to a district's improvement plan, which actually identifies. And we would actually get together and say, we'd be looking at a 5% increase of those students scoring three and above, and we would actually identify those. And at one time, they were actually posted on the website for our district. So that's really, that's the board's direction, to look for a strategic plan separate from that improvement plan that you're referencing.
And we've done that before. We've had a board strategic.
You should have.
Yes, we have.
Well, I think there's, there is two things. We're talking about the board having a strategic plan, which we've often mirrored that with the state of the district information that we've gotten, and we've used that for backup. And then the, the district improvement plan, is what, is what, St. Pete College, was it? Do they work with, helping school boards develop district strategic plans for the board?
Who was in the meeting with me at FSBA when they were working on the strategic plan? Ginger, you were there? But the answer is yes. Yes, and I would like to steal the information.
And that was what, I thought it was for boards.
Right, right.
And I was thinking, because we've talked about it, Mr. Dodd has talked and brought that up as well, about, and it's really time for, I think, the board to go through that process again.
I have copies of two board plans, but they're old.
They were old plans.
They're old plans.
So I think, unless, and board members correct me if I'm wrong, I think what we're talking about is really a board plan, a strategic plan, and not necessarily one out of that. Doesn't mean that out of that doesn't become conversations with, you know, what information we want from the district, and it develops that way. But I think what we're talking about is probably a board one, is, do you know if St. Pete will do any presentation to us?
Yes.
Because I'm wondering if maybe we should just schedule that in an upcoming workshop to get that underway.
I asked if they would, and the answer was yes.
Okay. Then, then let's work with adding that, you know, quickly or soon onto the, one of the workshops. And I know, I'm looking at Ms. Verarami, I'm really thinking of you, Mr. Mullen, as well. And we'll get that, and we can get that presentation started, and then if that's a direction we can go, we can start that. One of the biggest challenges is, and I know from, because I kind of came in at the end of a lot of the strategic plans that you all did, is there's so many ways of going about it. And, I mean, it seems like there's, there's different philosophies. FSBA has one, and so I would be interested in having somebody start to, you know, give us some ideas of how we can proceed, because that seems to be one of the most challenges of, how you proceed with our thoughts becoming part of those goals. Does any, seems...
Mr. Chairman, are we at the point for board member comments?
That's what I'm doing next. That's where I'm going. Yes, sir. So with, Mr. Blocker, I'm sorry, Mr. Clodder, do you have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Blocker, did you have anything? Mr. Mullen? Mr. Dodd?
Okay. Well, I noticed that we have the Stuff the Bus Events coming up, which was involved with, I was involved with last year, seemed like a great cause, but this Saturday, it's going to be at all Citrus County Publics locations. And then the Saturday, the 25th, it's going to be both at Walmart and Winn-Dixie. I think they've kind of expanded it, right? Because it seems like it was always at, at Publix and then at Walmart, but now Winn-Dixie's a part of that too. So I know that's a great cause, so I wanted to bring that up. I also have a question for the, for administration on the Back to the School Expo, that I've been, I'm seeing advertised in the Chronicle, and I didn't know if, what participation level we had in that. I don't know if any of you saw the, saw the ad, Back to the School Expo, that they've been running in the Chronicle.
I'm in town, I'm sorry.
Is that, is that something that we, we are involved with, or?
We have some groups that are participating with it. WTI, I think, is going down there. Is that correct, Mark?
Yep.
And also, I think Citrus High Band is performing there. But it's mostly geared at community groups, community activities for elementary and middle school kids outside of the school day, you know, extra crick or activities, sports, karate, that kind of stuff, as well as, I think there's some YMCA and Boys and Girls Club may be involved in it as well. But it's mostly a community event. But they have contacted some of our schools for information.
Okay. All right. And we can talk a little bit about that more, but I didn't know that's this Saturday also. So I was just kind of curious of what role we played in that, but maybe I'll try to make a...
I don't think in the past that it's been one that we've necessarily, you know, been that. Mr. Dodd, it's one? Absolutely.
We've never had a specific booth set up there.
Okay. I also would like to bring before the board, or a request to the chairman, as far as a presentation on heat stroke, dehydration, concussions, and cardiac arrest, and youth sports that are coming up, I would kind of like to have an update on that at either a workshop or a board meeting. We have, you know, preseason is coming up for football, and all the sports get cranked up here. And I would like to see, or have a presentation before the board on what, you know, what the district does to ensure that children are safe and hydrated and all those things.
Oh, Mr. Dodd, let me tell you, when I was in Alaska, it was this long, her beautiful, one-year, blue-eyed daughter, and it was almost 69 degrees, I'm not lying, and she said, hydrate, honey, it's so hot. And I thought, I'll show you why. I didn't go there. Hydrate, honey, hydrate. Drink your water.
We do, we do have multiple things that we, we have in place, so, but we will have Mr. Sheffield, he can address that at the next workshop, if you want it that soon, or we can...
Yeah, I think it would be good, because the other one, and I have, and maybe just to add to it, because I've had to ask the question, like Gatorade, how, you know, if a student brings Gatorade, is that, because that's become one of those questions of, is it a medication? Is it something that, you know, I think the, I think that from what my, from what I've been hearing, and I'm pleased to hear that, it sounds like we've been using common sense. But it would be nice to just know that that's part of the, the aspects of that heat, you know, you know, that replenishing, or, I'm sorry.
And I'm, I would assume that our coaches are being trained and...
They, and that's what, yeah.
Things, but I just would like to hear that as far as the big picture goes.
Yeah, we could, we could come and tell you what steps we take, and I think that'd be great. Expectations are.
And the only other thing I would like to see, I know there was a question on the calendar that we approved, dealing with the fair and spring break, and I wanted to get an update on that, if, you know, that can be something we could have at our next meeting, or, or some conversation as far as what, do we know if that's been finalized by the fair board on the dates of the fair?
It was my understanding, and we can get that for you, but Mr. Dodd, it was my understanding it was, and it was the fair that had moved it as a result of their vendors that they needed. So, and I think unfortunately, that being on the calendar committee, and I'm just kind of going by memory here, one of the challenges, because I thought, well, Kevin, let's change spring break type thing. It wasn't a real option that we had to do that.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I think we'd already approved the calendar when they told us.
Yeah, but even if we were, I mean, I think there could be steps, but there wasn't, because of the testing windows, there wasn't flexibility to do that.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't want us to...
But I think, but I would appreciate that too. So if we could get that, and just get an update, maybe is to...
Let me clarify, you want, basically, just a conversation about the calendar and how it coincides with the...
Just verification as to when the fair has had to make their move, because we, of course, tried to accommodate that as we have been, and they had to, and I don't think they wanted to. I think it was...
It was a vendor issue.
It was a vendor issue, so we can find out where that is.
But we'll include in that how we'll deal with the FFA kids as well. Yeah, and, you know, I have heard that there were still some up in the air with the fair board, so I don't know, but I want us to be able to communicate with our parents and our teachers too. I mean, all the, the people involved in our schools with these kids being gone, I want to make sure they know, you know, there's some planning, there's some talk going on, so we can be ready for that.
Yeah, and I, and I appreciate it, Mr. Mullen, on having FFA, because that becomes the question of how we're going to accommodate them. And four inch. The 10th? Is it, I'm asking the question, is it the 10th or the 9th?
The first day of school?
Oh, it's 10th.
10th, yeah. It has to be now the 10th, that's right. And I believe staff is the, for most staff is the 3rd.
Oh, for 3rd, 3rd back there.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Ms. Bryant, thanks.
I'm back. That's it.
Did you catch any salmon?
Yes. And halibut.
Halibut.
And linkage.
I heard some people just go to Alaska for the halibut.
They do, we heard. We went to Mount Vinale too, and saw the mountain.
Oh, yes. Ms. Valford?
I went to the June 25th Long Range Planning Committee meeting. We've got Floral City, the wastewater treatment plant. You'll be all happy to know that it will be completed August 10th. So once that project's completed, the plant will then be beaded over to the county, and we will relinquish water treatment duties as a school system. So that's all.
Like the last one we have?
Yeah, as far as that was concerned, yes.
The last one in the county?
Uh-huh. As far as school board ownership. We've got the Pleasant Grove sidewalk, the elementary school sidewalk.
Marine Science Station.
Did you want to jump in there?
No, I just want to say, she says that last one, we have smaller than Marine Science Station.
Yeah, yeah, that one. Okay, so we've got the Pleasant Grove Elementary School Sidewalk Project that has made the MPO list, so that will be completed. We don't have a completion date on that yet, and we don't have a start date, but we certainly will be watching for that. We'll see, because we do notice kids walking to school down that path. Enrollment's being updated consistently, and I'm at this stage of the game, looking at the Beverly Hills Floral Sidewalk Project over in Beverly Hills, that is something that's still being ranked, and it is at the top tier. So there are several sidewalk projects that are being considered. Other than that, a lot of different things happening with Long Range Planning, and Chuck Dixon does an outstanding job facilitating that, and I want to thank you very much. Appreciate you making it interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Powers?
I have one in my three already, so...
You have nothing else? It's open mic!
Thank you.
I'm just going to pass out a positive letter that I received here. Six, I'll get, I think, Mr. Bradshaw. This is from Chairman Adams, and I just want to read it here to the record. Dear Chairman Kennedy, I am pleased to inform you that on June 23rd, 2015, the Board of County Commission meeting and the board unanimously voted to restore the status of the Citrus County School Board Representative on the Citrus County Planning Development Commission. Subsequently, it is the Board of County Commission's desire to reassure the Citrus County School Board that the school district representative may speak on issues, on those items brought before the Planning Development Commission, that are of importance to the school district's program and future plans. It shall be the Planning Development Commission Chairman's responsibility to ensure that the school board representative is allowed to participate and provide input on issues of growth that are particular to the intent of section 163.3174 of the Florida statute. We certainly appreciate Mr. Dixon and his participation on the Development Council, and we are grateful for the professional partnership fostered between the Citrus County School Board staff and the Citrus County Board of County Commission staff in coordinating and sharing planning information related to meetings of the need of our community. And it was signed by Commissioner, I'm sorry, by Commissioner and Chairman Scott Adams. I want to thank publicly the Board of County Commission and Mr., our Chairman Adams, for sending the letter and for their vote. And Mr. Dixon, welcome back. Board, I also want to thank you for all of your work, both collectively and individually on this matter. And I'm, I continue to be reassured with the relationship that we've been fostering with the Board of County Commission. I also want to... I also want to take an opportunity, as Ms. Powers had indicated, to congratulate our new executive director of the Florida Board of Association, Andrea Messina. I was very pleased to see Ms. Messina chosen. She was one of the members that trained me when I was a new board member, and I have valued her on, often calling her on advice and help. So I look forward to that. With that, we have just a few minutes. Everybody doing okay? It was a, we had, Ms. Bryant and I didn't get a chance, we kind of passed in the night. We did, but it was, it was a good trip. And we waved over the Grand Canyon for, for Mr. Dodd, who I think you were already home. Our plane flew right over Hoover Dam too, which was kind of cool. That was, I hadn't done that before, so I felt like I got bonus trips along the way.
This is going to our largest state, it says a lot. Our setting our goals bigger and bigger, like that.
Now, I will say, I was a little taken back by 10% tax, sales tax in Seattle, so...
It cost me $10 to do one load of wash. And that's not crying, okay? Just saying. I hadn't been to a laundromat in my forever. And it was a big load, but it was still 10 bucks. In Alaska.
I did like though the train station, you know, to take it right into Seattle, that was nice. And going to that. But it was exciting, so I appreciate that. And you know what, as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, Ms. Smith, why don't you come on up? I did not intentionally mean to do that, I just was thinking, I was trying to be correct in our time. Ms. Victoria Smith is going to speak to us on the topic of support job description. And Ms. Smith, are you enjoying some of your summer? I see, I see that you guys have had rainy day activities and cool stuff you've been doing, so...
Yeah, just with the green kids. That's a good thing. But no, I've been busy, only had a few days off. All right, well, good evening, Chair, Board, Assistant Superintendent, and of course, Mr. Bradshaw. You know, we have lots of attacks against us, teachers. And so with that, we're constantly fighting for the teachers. But what's lacking is the fight for the support. And we kind of sometimes forget them. And right now, with the clocking in and out, we're noticing, well, at least the support is bringing it to our attention. I'm sorry, Victoria Smith, Citrus County Education Association President, sorry, just to remember that. But anyway, they're noticing that their job, they're doing a lot more than what's required for the 40 hours. So they're having to do a lot more past the 40-hour timeframe. And of course, when they clock in and then they clock out, it's after the 40 hours. And then the 40 hours, of course, is being adjusted. So it's going back to the 40 hours, so they're not getting that pay. Now, I've talked to some, and some are like, okay, that's okay. I just want it to be recognized that my job does take much longer than what the timeframe's calling for. An example is registered. The register, she has to be, or she or he, excuse me, has to take care of FTE, scheduling, and grade, and of course, then they have the deadlines. And with that, a lot of times, they have to work past what their timeframe is. Then, of course, all of a sudden, someone leaves. So now that register is also taking on another job description. They're now taking on the guidance secretary job, let's say. Which means now they also have to do their job and that other job. And then it stays that way until the next school year. Well, hopefully, they get a new position available for them. So with their job description, their job description is not just what is entailed, their job. Now they're taking on other, because it's very open. It's not specific. Every support person, well, again, I shouldn't say that, because I could be remiss. Most job descriptions are very generic. So, which leaves open interpretation that they could do whatever is wanting by the administration. And a lot of times, that goes past their time, which they can give a really good job. And they value their job, they really do. So they will do that job even though it's past their 40 hours. But then, we should value them the same as they value their job. And I know you guys do. I know Citrus County is very good at that, they really are. But I just feel that we put them aside too much, because we've been focused on the teachers. And I want to, I want you to keep focusing on us, because we're being attacked, we are. But we're forgetting sometimes the support. And so we need to really think about them at the same time. And that's just what I want. I just want us to remember that support is also being attacked, they're just being attacked differently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And I think we all share in a lot of those sentiments. It's been a conversation that I know that the superintendent and I have had on certain, some of those very positions, because they have grown and, like, our teachers have taken on more responsibilities, our staff, support staff, have assumed other jobs, merfed into other jobs, morphed into other jobs. And I know it's a continual process that we're going through. So thank you for bringing it to our attention. With that, we have, I believe, 15 minutes till our next time certain. So I'm going to go ahead and have us recess until 5:29. And then if we can reconvene, then we're in recess.